...of the City Council of the City of Fredericksburg. We will be led in invocation tonight by Counselor Matt Kelly, and we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by the Fredericksburg Yellow Jackets. Before I call the Yellow Jackets forward, I would like to state that this city lost a great lady within the last week, Mrs. Gladys Todd. She was a teacher and mentor to many and an inspiration to all, and we extend our condolences to her family and her extended family. Now, would the Yellow Jackets please come forward and stand while Mr. Kelly leads us in the invitation, invocation? And the audience may stand if you wish.
Most merciful Father, please remind us that we are here to serve and not be served, and help us make decisions that benefit all our constituents. Please be with those who are in distress or ill, and with their families. Please also bring our men and women in uniform home, protect them, and bring them home safely to their families. In your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and if you will remain standing, I... We have a proclamation, a wonderful proclamation to make to all these fine young men. The Fredericksburg Yellow Jackets are the 2014 American Youth Football National Champions. Whereas in December of 2014, the Fredericksburg Yellow Jackets won the American Youth Football National Division II Championship Games, defeating the dullest Patriots of Virginia with a final score of 12 to 6. And whereas, this is the first national American Youth Football Championship for the Fredericksburg Yellow Jackets. And whereas, the Fredericksburg Yellow Jackets, the coaches, staff, and players are to be congratulated for an outstanding season under head coach Quintero Parker. And it is worth mentioning that the American Youth Football Association is the largest youth football organization in the world. And whereas, this outstanding achievement is a tribute to an athletic and academic program dedicated to the highest level of competition, sportsmanship, and academic excellence that reflects positively on the Fredericksburg Yellow Jackets Association and the entire Fredericksburg community. Now therefore, I, Mary Catherine Greenlaw, Mayor of the City of Fredericksburg, Virginia, with the City Council and the citizens of Fredericksburg, officially commend and congratulate the outstanding accomplishments and contributions by the Fredericksburg Yellow Jackets football players, coaches, parents, and sponsors, and encourage each member of the team to continue positive athletic and scholastic contributions. I congratulate you and these young men for representing our city so well.
Thank you very much. I would just like to thank everyone for this moment. Thank Anthony Poole, our organizational president, for having me as his coach representing the foundation organization. Thank my coaching staff here for standing behind me the whole season and instilling the values of these kids. And thanks to the parents for everything that you guys have done, and thanks to the kids for outstanding season. Thank you.
We have now come to the time during our meeting when we have comments from the public. We provide this opportunity for comments from citizens who have signed up to speak before the start of the meeting. To be fair to everyone, please observe the five-minute time limit and yield the floor when the clerk of council indicates that your time has expired. Decorum in the council chambers will be maintained. Comments that are not relevant to city business are inappropriate and out of order. We have two speakers signed up tonight. The first is Chris Hornick.
Good evening, Mayor Greenlaw and members of council. My name is Chris Hornick. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Fredericksburg EDA to urge you to support Item 10B, the amendment to the city's technology zones to incorporate the entire city of Fredericksburg. One of the main goals of the EDA strategic plan is to find ways to stop the export of our citizens to other localities for their jobs and for their places of employment. For too long, we have been dependent upon Northern Virginia and the Washington DC market, as well as retail jobs in the immediate area. The technology incentives that the city adopted many years ago has given the city a strategic advantage in the region to market itself to firms that provide technology-based services to our community. As it stands today, there are a number of zones that you have already adopted in the city. Those zones are primarily the Route 1 corridor, downtown Princess Anne. There are small pieces within Central Park, and then along the Route 3 corridor. What you have before you tonight is a request to amend that to include the entire city. We feel that that is a good move for the city because it would allow the city to offer incentives to businesses when they are locating in areas that are not currently within your boundaries. Location for a technology business, we look to try to put them in certain areas, but there are areas outside of the current technology zones that are attractive to technology businesses. If you look at the list of what qualifies as a technology business, there are many technology businesses that already exist outside of the technology zone in the city. In the end, it's up to the city to decide whether or not a particular business qualifies for a incentive. So simply amending the zone to include the entire city doesn't mean that anyone who comes into the city automatically gets a technology grant. It's up to the city's staff to score that particular user when they come in with a request for a technology grant, and then for the city council to review and approve any incentive agreements. So expanding the district does not increase automatically your need or compel you to offer grants to anyone who comes in. But we do think it's very important in attracting businesses to the city. It increases our marketing advantage, and it will continue to help make the city the hub of the region from an economic development standpoint. One thing I wanted to mention, if you look at the current technology zones, there really are not very many commercially or industrially zoned areas within the city that are not inside technology zones. From my count, there are actually three. The Central Park, Celebrate Virginia South area, is one that is not within a technology zone. There's some small pieces in there. The second is the Industrial Park, and the third is the Route 1 area south of the Blue Gray Parkway. All three of those areas, I think if you were to think about, are these areas we would want technology-based businesses to locate? I think most would agree, yes. If we could lure technology businesses to our Industrial Park, that would be a win for the city. So in our mind, there's no reason not to include it. Otherwise, if we did have a technology business that decided to locate in the Industrial Park, you would have to amend the technology zone for that particular parcel every time someone were to go in there in order to offer that incentive to one of those businesses. So again, we're in support of this. We think it's a good thing for the city. You're still in control, at the end of the day, in offering your incentives, but it gives you the flexibility to offer those incentives to users that come that will benefit the citizens of the city of Fredericksburg. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marilyn Brown.
My name is Marilyn Brown. I live in Countryside Apartment in Caroline County, 22546. I'm here tonight, Teresa of Rappahannock, Presine Street. Mike, Mike do not want to, they jaws, Mike to get people to jaw and captivate by home. They have two, they need to go down to Goodwill on Presine at nine o'clock. Teresa want to work with Mike and Minnesota, but they do not want to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Those are the only speakers we have signed up to speak to us tonight. Is any member of the council that would like to place an item on the council agenda? Is any member of the council wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? I will note for the public that Item 8C has previously been removed from our agenda for the evening.
Move consent agenda submitted.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
We have four sets of minutes before us. The council retreat of October 17th, the council retreat October 18th, public hearing January 13th, and regular session January 13th. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes?
Move to approve the amendment submitted.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
City manager, agenda, Item 10A, the fiscal year 2015 financial update. Ms. Lakey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'd like to give you a brief update as we're midway through FY '15. I'll start off by letting you know that so far, we've collected $36.6 million in revenue throughout the close of December, and that's more than this period in FY '14, and that's approximately 58% of general fund revenues. The second half collections for real estate and personal property taxes are due in May, and that's a large portion of our revenue, so we anticipate that collection later in the fiscal year. But the first half collections either met or exceeded budget in those two large categories. Sales tax revenue has increased slightly over the prior fiscal year, and December's a very important collection month in terms of how we will finish out FY '15. We will get that number probably within the next two weeks, but it will come out sometime in February. Sales taxes, the number that staff feels will have to be watched most closely as we conclude fiscal year '15, and we will continue to monitor and update council on that projection. Meals tax collections have been very strong this year, and so far, we're up 2.47%. December collections were very strong, and as we concluded Restaurant Week last month, staff hopes that January posts a number as well as December did. There's excellent news on the lodging tax front. We're up 14.98% over fiscal year '14. The occupancy levels at the Hyatt are up without significant leakage from other hotels, as well as there's been an increased use of conference and other meeting space in these hotels, so we anticipate that this revenue will exceed budget for fiscal year '15. On the expenditure side, we're on track to stay within our budgetary means. All of our large departments are tracking where they should be throughout the year. We do have a turnover credit, which requires us to save $250,000 in our personnel lines of funds that are already budgeted, which we do through management when we have turnover, and we anticipate that that will be met in fiscal year '15. And we are also seeing significant savings in our fuel lines. For gasoline, the current average for the fiscal year is $2.48, and last year, the average for the first half of the year was $2.78. So we will be seeing a benefit on the expense side in our general fund. We will see the negative side of that on our motor fuels tax collection, but in terms of general fund savings, that will be good for us. We've used, our current contingency is $513,701, so there is still funds available if there are any unforeseen needs in the second half of the year. So that's all I have for this evening, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Lakey? Item 10B, as a first read, are expanding the technology zone to encompass the entire city. Ms. Hiddell.
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw and members of council. We had a very interesting discussion with council at the retreat last fall regarding the city's technology zones, and you all recognize the capital investment and the important well-paying jobs these zones bring to the city, specifically the technology zones. Although they don't have as high a return on investment as our tourism zones, they do have those important jobs and the important capital investment. And as our EDA chairman noted, they do keep some of our employment here within the city, which is a value to us. So we're here today seeking your approval to make the entire city of Fredericksburg a technology zone, subject, of course, to our zoning laws. But we feel like this will open up additional properties to our recruitment of technology zones. It sends a very positive message to our business, existing business community, and new prospects for business that we are receptive to recruiting those technology-based businesses here, and we want to be seen as a business and technology-friendly city. So as you recall, we have four existing technology zone performance agreements that rebate a portion of taxes gained from these businesses that we've recruited and entered into an agreement with. So once they perform, they do get a rebate of taxes or fees paid to the city. And they... To our investment in significantly lower 0.2% total in the tourism zones, but we feel like, again, very important investment to being of our community and the type of... Are able to answer your questions, and agree that this is something that we should do.
Counselor Ellis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly happy to see this expand. I know this was brought up a couple of years ago, maybe it's been more than that, when we first looked at the zone itself, and then I know there was a desire to expand it even at that time, so I'm certainly happy to support this. I do have three questions. One, what are the plans to market this, you know, outside of, obviously, the city? Second, can a business obtain an incentive and also a grant? Is that allowable?
The city government enters into these performance agreements, and grants are usually awarded by the Economic Development Authority. So there have been instances where the Economic Development Authority awards a grant, and there is a performance agreement as well. There's been a few examples of that. We will recruit these through our electronic marketing efforts, our individual sales calls, and our continuing efforts with our partners.
Okay. I have one more question. I was meeting with a small business owner today, actually, and he, when he found out I was on the city council, he asked me, what can, is there anything you can do, you know, for me? And I thought, I said, well, actually, there's a measure, an ordinance on our agenda tonight that may help you, because he was a technology business. But does your, or what does your department offer in terms of, maybe I'll use the term even counseling, or just advice in general to a business on how they might go about, not just the incentive, but even the grant part?
We're happy to meet with all businesses. Bill Freeling, our Assistant Director, Amy Paragoy, and I are happy to meet with businesses to inform them of the technology zones can apply to business recruitment, expansion, and in some cases, retention. We had a QR C, is actually a retention incentive that we awarded last year. And as I said, we're happy to meet with them and counsel them. Our staff does a great job in informing them of opportunities.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Devine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Hiddell and Mr. Freeling. I did have the opportunity to speak with them about this ordinance a little while ago, and absolutely am in support of the fact that the hub zone is citywide as well. Agree with the take, improve several people, people off the roads to keep some of those jobs, you know, potential job, young people in our community. And so I am very much in support of technology zone to...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A plan to expand, but at some point, in our retreat, we had a, we've been using incentives. Who's been, some tower councils express some concerns, and we have tech zones, we have, we have hub zones, we have our district zones, and we have zones, 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 zones. Sponsivania in every other locale to get an understanding at some point, and maybe work with, got how successful, Counselor, or market this. Great to have a zone. You look at Stafford County, they've got a technology, they're actually putting the infrastructure in to make sure. Right now, we have the university broadband, we are in this, and I think it's time. Are we handling to, on establish, not enough just to put them in place. The mayor knows this too. All the meetings we've had with GSA, a lot of tech zones are tied to, want to have that access, they want to know that, it's a drawback for us, it's going to continue to be, of course, how we're going to deal with that. That come into making this zone, and just basically a, there's a lot of things we need to talk about, and frankly, how successful we've been with our zones, problems at the retreat, with some of the issues we had.
Thank you.
What's the will of the council?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve on first read, expanding the technology zone to encompass the entire city.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
And that is a first read. It will come back to us for a second read. Item 10C is authorizing the execution of a fiscal agency services agreement with the Rappahannock Area Youth Services and Group Home Commission. Mr. Whitley.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, you have before you a resolution that approves and general outline an agreement between the Rappahannock Area Youth Services and Group Home Commission and the city for fiscal agency services. As you may recall, the Chaplain Youth Center and Rappahannock Area Office on Youth have merged into one combined agency, the Rappahannock Area Youth Services and Group Home Commission. One of the key tasks for the commission and their staff is to organize the affairs of the new commission. Right now, the city serves as the fiscal agent for the Rappahannock Area Office on Youth, or that portion of the new agency that was the area on Youth, Office on Youth. The Chaplain Youth Center part maintains its own accounts. So the new commission needs to merge the two into one financial set of accounts, and is requesting that the city provide these services. So the broad outlines of the agreement are as follows. Number one, the agency employees would not be city employees. The agency would be responsible for its own benefits and personnel policies. The city would provide accounting and payroll services for the agency. The city treasurer, Ms. Wood, would maintain and invest revenue received, and the city would have fiduciary responsibility for the funds of the agency. The agency would retain responsibility for its own financial management. So we'd be their deposit and banker, if you would. The agency will compensate the city for the services that we're going to provide based on a fee calculated using 2% of their budgeted payroll, plus an amount per check issued designed to be a direct reimbursement of cost, less a credit for investment earnings received. But there's a minimum fee of $7,000 for the first year. There's a few details that need to be completed and finalized, but the commission approved this, what you have before you tonight, in concept, and staff is requesting council approval of the concept as well to finalize the agreement and go ahead and get them underway. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Whitley regarding this fiscal agency agreement? We do this for other agencies as well, or other entities?
We do have a few. J and D R Court Services Unit is one. Of course, the Office on Youth, the Criminal Justice Academy is the other one that springs into mind. There are not as many as there used to be, but this would be sort of a, we already have the Office on Youth, and as we discussed it in the commission and talked about it with different agencies, and what the commission really wanted and needed to have is sort of a better accounting, if you will, of the chaplain side. And the easiest thing and the best thing was to come in with the city, so this is kind of what we negotiated out with them.
Thank you. Counselor Duffy.
Yes, I'd just like to thank Mr. Whitley for, on the committee, representatives from the jurisdiction, doing a good job of making this, so I appreciate.
Thank you.
Can I make the motion? I'd like to move, with Rappahannock Area Youth Services and Group Home Commission.
Second. Motion. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Item 10D is a second, ending the, authority of the zoning administrator parking requirements using alternative parking, and increasing the, to $6,500 per space. Johnston?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As has been previously discussed, is an amendment to the Downtown Parking District, M Street, between Prince Edward and... For parking. This matter has been discussed several times at council. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Johnston? What's the will of the council?
Madam Mayor, I have approval of the ordinance 1503, upon second read, expanding the Downtown Parking District, clarifying the authority of the zoning administrator to reduce downtown parking requirements using alternative parking plans and increasing the Downtown Parking Fund Fee to $6,500 per space.
Is there a second? Second, is there? Yes. Vice Mayor Weathers?
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess it comes to no surprise to you all that I'm still vehemently opposed to this. I firmly believe that this is going to have an adverse effect on businesses surrounding this area and, and the residents. Having said that, I know that the majority of you don't think that's right. And believe me, I'm rooting for you to be right and me to be wrong. I hope it turns out that way. But I, I fear that it doesn't. the way this went through, it, you know, we had a twenty-minute discussion at planning commission with no one speaking, I think, at public hearing. We had no one here for public hearing, and we know that there were lots of people against it. I, I was elected to serve folks. I know some of you think that there's a responsibility for people to keep up with this, and I don't necessarily disagree with that. But, you know, when I went around and asked for votes, I told people that I would, I would represent them. So I'm going to request of Chuck, of Mr. Johnson and his staff, that anything of this nature that comes up in order to, that if you'll let me know when it goes to tech committee, so I can prepare people to be able to speak on it. I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Echo a little bit of what Vice Mayor Withers said. One, this was initiated as a result of a single project. Two, it was a policy initiation not from the council, but kind of just went through the planning commission. And frankly, parts of it were negotiated, the other half of this, i.e. what to do with the other half of the parking, seemed to have been agreed to even before this issue came to the council. We just spent a lot of time talking about, potentially spending a lot of money on parking and dealing with issues downtown. If, if the council feels free to let staff make these decisions for them, then let's say that. But decisions like this should have started with the council, should have had the opportunity, as, as Mr. Withers said. And we've had this conversation, and I'm not specifically hitting any one person, but when you have public announcements of, we are changing a modification to code such and such and such, da-da-da-da-da-da, most people don't know what it is, frankly. And when you say, oh, by the way, what this means is we're, this particular business is not going to get, have to put in for parking, and oh, by the way, those spaces we just leased for the quote, "public" to enjoy downtown, we're giving them some, then you're going to get people to come out. And I think this just got rushed through, single issue, one business, council basically is reacting, and frankly, at the very last minute, you know, the agreement on the lease was back in November seventh, we don't get it until our second meeting in November. This is not the way we should be doing this. Whether you support it or not, you know, this is one of those be careful as a council, be careful what you wish for moments. You want it, fine, it's great, it's done, it's got it done fast. Then there's going to be something coming up in the future that you're not going to like, and you're going to be sitting here like I am, making the same comments I'm making right now about this. So that is why I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Frye?
Thank you. And I know we had a lot of lengthy discussion about this, this parking. I just want to note that when it was presented to council, and I know we all got the same, same packet, that it was presented as a, pretty much the whole downtown district for, for a new parking zone, or extended parking zone for the whole downtown. And that plan itself was revamped at the meeting that it was presented at. And instead of it going to, like I said before, half of downtown Fredericksburg, it, it came back and I think after, after everybody commented, that it came back to one block. So I support the one block. If there was, the way it was presented, if it was presented as a whole downtown district or extending the downtown, I would not agree with that at the first, on the first read. So I just want to make a note of that, that it was presented as the whole city. And I said before, Mr. Johnson, if we, if we do make a decision like that, then, you know, we can't just come in, well, my opinion, we can't just come in with something that huge to do it in one night. So, but I support the project, being that it was minimized to one area, and then any future parking issues, so on and so forth, we can try to address now. And I think we're working on it, but I just wanted to give my input on that.
Thank you, Counselor Frye. Is there any further discussion? There is a motion on the, and it has been made and seconded. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes four, three. Withers, Kelly, Duffy voting against.
Thank you. I will call upon Mr. Cameron for the city manager's update.
Yes, Mayor Greenlaw, members of council, the manager's report is included in your packet. Let me add a couple of items of interest to you. Please note, first of all, that we have scheduled a work session with the city school board on Monday, March the thirtieth. And the purpose of that meeting will be to talk about number one, the recently updated enrollment projections and facility assessments, and number two, the school board operating and capital budget requests for fiscal 2016. So again, that meeting is set for Monday, March the thirty, thirtieth here in City Hall. Let me take a moment to share a brief update on several important capital projects. The Charles Street sewer replacement project continues. Work in Charles Street fortunately will be finished later this week. Work will then move up to Dunmore Street and should only take a week or two. You should know that the Charles Street sewer serves as one of the, really one of the major spines in the city sewer collection system. That's why it's really important. It goes from Kenmore Avenue all the way down to Hazel Run. And as disruptive as this project has been this winter, I'm pleased to report that once it's done, we shouldn't have to do any major work on that for decades, many, many years. It's been a tough project for WC Spratt, but they've hung in there and they've done a good job replacing the sewer line. We originally thought we could replace a lot of that with cured-in-place pipe, but that was not possible. They've had to open cut almost the street from one end to the other, and that's one reason why it's taken so long. The College Heights Water Improvements Project continues. That's the new eight-inch water line along Rappahannock Avenue, now progressing along Penn Street, and completed all, almost all the way progress port has drive sidewalk engineering plans and specifications are complete and are now undergoing final in reviews. This is no later than March first in the Twin Lakes Drive neighborhood of Conduits have been installed. The poles, which came from have been received us to start installing the bases and the poles and the lights this week. Say an update on the city's production pilot. Review that staff report. Or Mr. Fawcett, if you have any questions about it. He's seeking program in F Y C. So we will have opportunities to discuss as we get into the manager's recommended budget later in the spring. That you have about these projects or any others?
Any questions? Yeah.
Just want to say a big thank you and kudos Doug Fawcett on the Cowan Boulevard. A long time coming, and we've been talking about it for a number of years. It's a lot of money, realize that. The poles are up, they're not yet connected, but they're, so that section of Cowan will no longer incredibly dark as people bike before Central Park also. So, thank you very much.
Any other questions for Cameron? Would like to note that we'll the update of the city's comprehensive plan. I urge you to read your web, it's on the web, city website, and participate during on this first public hearing for the over a period of several years. This, this the plan, and it's a very event. It hasn't been updated since seven, and so what done now will set the for the lease the next five years. Comprehensive plan has I mean, when things come before judge it and come before the planning commission against what the comprehensive wants. So it's not an, it's not an empty it's used. So, mind you, that's seven thirty, Mr. Johnson tomorrow in this chamber before the, before the planning commission.
Madam
Yes, Vice Mayor Withers?
Thank you, Mayor. We're, I'm starting reading some of the come out of these, uh, uh, commission and council for approval. Uh, we will have a work session, half-day work session to discuss go through some things before we, before we I, I hope we just
Read it?
But I'm simply, I, I think it, it needs not just a half-hour work session council, but the comp plan is extremely important. Developments that come before us can send your comp plan the reason approve a particular or whatever. So I think we need to make sure that we all understand what's there if, you know, before we do that.
Yeah, I, the planning commission, planning staff talking about, Mr. Withers, the be coming bar and last, one last consolidation of the, and I'm in hopes that the commission at their second meeting in February. But whenever the that to the city manager work with them to schedule an session with council, just sort of walk and discuss as this is a general policy document that, that we're already starting to work for the next steps in the process, which are area plans that specific and much more your involvement, I believe. We're looking at a series of, of threats, so people can and identify issues. We're looking at these area plans and areas around the city and the adjoining areas. We're all looking forward to kind of getting
Yeah. You meant it. So I, I know you've been and be there and I the, the nature of a comp plan. But I, I'm saying that really important that, that, that we make sure there are things that will not force us into that, that we might plan. I, that's yes, it is, Madam Attorney?
Any other council have any other item to bring before?